Let's get the meeting started.
All right, y'all pray with me. Lord, we ask you to bless us and watch over us. We ask that you watch over our community. As we hear these sirens run through town, we ask to bless the folks that are in need. We ask that you watch over us. We ask to watch over our loved ones. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. All right. First up is discussion on requests of Piedmont utilizing the conference center. How are you? We're glad to have you tonight.
Thank you. My name's Kat Lyles. I'm the Director of Student Life at Piedmont. We have a formal every year in the spring, and we like to do it off-campus. I mean, it's a little more special. We have been in the past few years doing it at the community house, and I'm looking for a different venue. I watched your video last month, so you're maybe, and it looks like you have a lot of questions, so I just wanted to come and kind of clear the air and tell you kind of what we did. So, it's dance from eight to eleven P.M. We hire vendors to serve alcohol so that we are not involved in the alcohol sales. We have a city cop outside, and we have a Piedmont cop inside, and I have not had any trouble in the past couple of years with this. Just wanted to ask if y'all might consider renting to us.
Okay. My only question is alcohol in this room. You know, that's kind of my concern. Spillage, stains, red wine over there, you know.
It's just weird.
Okay. The smell of what I remember, you know, with attorney parties and stuff.
Tell them stuff like.
That's all.
Is the space big enough?
This space in the kitchen area, I think, is kind of what I was looking at.
So how many people are in the apartment?
We have about seventy-five to one hundred. But you're close, and I could kind of keep it walking and it not be a problem. Any other questions?
Any way to, to, uh, limit that alcohol to the, to the kitchen, to the other rooms instead of here? To the carpet?
I don't know that that.
I can just see dancing. It's flashing.
Yeah.
It's going to spill.
Yeah.
There's no doubt.
And if y'all aren't interested in taking my money, that's okay. I just wanted to ask.
Are you interested in not having alcohol in here?
No.
So can we, if there were to be spill, is it going to be like perfect?
I don't know. I don't have a vote, but that's just my concern.
I understand.
And what would the rental fees be for this?
It's all for a rental room. It wouldn't change unless for some reason y'all want it to be lower.
So Thomas, if the council decided to move forward with this, there would have to be a change on the policies, correct? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's really the question as far as changing the policy to allow. So that's what would be up for council to make that change for the policy to, to allow that. I don't remember the number. I mean, what would be, what's going to be their rental?
What's the fee? Seventy-five dollars?
To rent the room?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars?
Yes. And then that's worth whatever may happen in here. That's the question for y'all.
The rental price to rent the room is, is more expensive. I don't have any friendly.
I think it's two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five. I think if you're not considering this, it's like four seventy-five.
Okay. So it's two seventy-five for the, how many hours? Is it per hour?
It was for the day, I guess.
I think it's for the day.
Set up and clean up.
I think it's like eight hours.
What does this, what does it say in here? I can't see that small. What does it say? Where did you pick up seventy-five dollars? What is that for?
I mean.
That's for, that's for a different discussion.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. Council, y'all have any other questions on what Piedmont is looking to do in this room?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Yes, ma'am. You too. All right. Next is discussion of amend section six dash nineteen temporary special event license to code ordinance. Okay, gotcha. What is this? Thomas has got your name next to it.
Yep.
So this, the, there was a question raised the last time one of these came up, about allowing, we discussed have, allow Piedmont to have their own, serve their own alcohol. They've got, we've got to amend the ordinance to allow for a temporary special use permit to allow that, even though they're a private university, they're allowed to do that, but they've got to have, they've still got to get a local license in order to do that. Different jurisdictions handle it differently. They, sometimes it's just one time per year for a period of time for like a festival. What I suggested for Piedmont in this situation, if they want to do this, I don't know if Piedmont can give any kind of feedback from them. Once a month, once every two months. The other change that happened, we did the one where they changed it to administrative. That was a cop. So this is, this is a change to allow Piedmont to sell, bring in a caterer or hire someone, either on duty, hire Mark Hand or to do their own.
This one's allowed the city manager to make the, their approval.
Yeah, right. And, and, and let's back it up a bit. Wouldn't it be cheaper and easier for them just to apply for an alcohol license? Well, the problem with that is that, in order to get the normal license, you gotta have a certain amount of fees for sales, and that's not what we usually are. Gotcha. So look at that temporary.
These are pure fun breaks, I guess.
Okay. This is not, it's not like a restaurant.
And on their campus.
On their campus. Yeah, they would be, yeah, exactly.
But this could be done, I mean, I know this is done with them in mind, but this could be applied to any organization or business within the city, correct?
So long as it's associated with a charitable or civic organization or the city at their wrist. So it would have to be chamber, something for a charity or a state. What about nonprofits? Nonprofits, as long as it's charitable. As long as they were doing it for the purpose of regularity or charity, this would apply. Okay. All right. Any other questions on that? Do y'all have any input as to how often and how long? The one you, the one that I, one that, that they are, is period after P five days, we're doing this for Piedmont, or primarily for Piedmont right there at their request.
Do they do this at their ball games, alumni weekends?
Right, right.
Things of that sort.
So putting a once a month on, uh, play a soccer season, that doesn't make any sense.
Why do we have to limit it? How often they want to do this?
Well, it's still gonna be a temporary special, yeah.
Well, let's just say the baseball game is three games, Friday Saturday stuff.
Which will be a period of, I think, three to five days. That's what.
While they had the school system.
But that's only, but that's only allowed that happen most of the year, the way that it was definitely. So you're saying you have to, you suggest making a change. Thomas, what's your suggestion?
I don't, I don't understand what Piedmont actually wants to accomplish. We're making this change to accommodate something they've requested.
But the CFO told me when I met with her that this was something ongoing they wanted as additional fundraising for the university. Because.
Did they have a guarantee or will you not have the budget?
No, because I didn't know they'd be limited. So I didn't ask that question.
So when I read this, I don't read it as, um, you just get five days. It just can't, you can have as many as you want. It just can't exceed five days in one year. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, I mean, they use five days where you're out the year, or like five day period. This particular one came from a city that, or a festival.
Okay.
So that's why I was, that was my interpretation. But yeah, you're right. It could be five days. So they would need a temporary, so they'd need a temporary license for baseball, and then they'd need a temporary license for soccer. And then one for.
That's more of a concession, and that's usually a different kind of license.
Yeah.
This, and those are not typically charitable. Those, when you're doing it for concessions, someone's usually making money on it. So if that's what they're really, if that's another thing that they're wanting to do, I think that's a different amendment.
Is this something we need to table to meet with Marshall and Kristen?
I mean, if they've got holiday stuff scheduled, I would.
Yeah, I would love that.
Because that was, that's what happened the last time.
But if you, if they're limited like this.
Well, we could pass this as limited, and then you have that discussion, and then we could amend it, you know, based on additional information that you get.
That's good. I like that.
Okay. If we decide to pass this as limited, what does that mean for us to amend this, other than special events, maybe approved by city manager? Is there anything we need to approve of other than special events? Needs to be approved by the city manager? I think that, and I think that, that I would suggest a change to allow two days per month. Okay. Because that, that at least allows them, if they've got, because if they've got holiday things scheduled, and y'all got, you don't have a great number of meetings left in the year, that would allow them, if they got Christmas or something, or fall something, then it would allow them to do that.
Is this one budget or two budgets?
Two days.
Okay.
So.
So we can find out the, uh, the answer to those questions. Yep. On a second reading. Okay.
I'd like to see this stay with the council rather than the city manager. I think the council should.
Well, reason has come to put it city managers, because it's come up several times in the past couple of years. And every time, it takes so much bureaucracy to get it to in front of us and really cost money to get it in front of us, the city attorney and everything else. That's where the suggestion, bring it in front of the city council. I mean, the city manager, allow city manager approval to kind of keep it up, up there without having to involve city council. Because every time it involves city council, it costs, it costs money.
All right. I'd still like to keep it, you must, my opinion.
I'd like to see it land on Mark's desk, mainly because of the time involved, not really finances, but to be able to access Mark, be able to get approval, go ahead and plan the events. I mean, that seems to me like, you know, as somebody who works in a system, um, time is of the essence, especially when you're planning something. You can't work, wait on a monthly meeting. You know, it would be great to be able to go to somebody that you've been working with.
It also requires two chess matches each as well.
So what, so where are we agreeing here? Like up to five days for twice a month?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be a public reading, so, so we're not agreeing on anything tonight, other than just agreeing to move forward with something for a, for a public reading. There, yeah, well, it's gonna be a public reading, so, so we're not agreeing on anything tonight, other than just agreeing to move forward with something for a, for a public reading, right?
Tom?
Okay. So there'll be two more conversations about that.
Yeah.
All right, discussion of one-way street ordinance for Dimmer's Lake Road. Uh, this was brought in front of us how long ago?
Four years ago.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one, okay.
Yeah.
And it was turned down and ends for a one-way street in that area?
There was just no, there was no vote, it died.
Okay, that's right.
And President Chrysler sent this request to me last week.
Right. Did he have a reason for the request?
I want to say he said safety, because the narrow, the road is very narrow and so forth.
Okay.
And I did call Lynn and tell her all about it, and, uh, yes.
And she was here a minute ago to make sure, and then she was opposed to it.
I should have read last time.
And I asked Casey and, um, Jim Andrews, their chief, to go look at the roads together, because it is to go from Massachusetts. Be still be a two-way till it gets to pass, right past parking lot X, and then we have the speed hump right there. So the one-way would start right there, so they can still access their parking lots down there. And then it would head toward Central at the bridge there. So you couldn't come in from the bridge, you would have to turn down Massachusetts Street dip, then or somebody else put it in the driveway back there, because Lynn enters her place off of Rhode Island. But she owns majority of that land down and around there, so she could have another lot or something where she would want to enter it either way, so.
So this is one-way coming out to Central?
It's two-way now.
Yeah.
But, but starting when you get past X and the crosswalk, it would just there be a one-way from that point.
To Central?
Yes. Casey, what you got? What's your opinion?
Uh, well, I agree, because once you go past that.
It's a work session.
There's a, there's a lot of blind spots there, you too, it's harder. There's no way you're going for it. But now they, a lot of accidents, that's the last parking lot Piedmont, so they come out of there, they go either way. You just can't come back in.
And what is the question asked? How many wrecks there have been?
I've, I've known one accident, never known an accident during a fourth of October, it's not, it's not like a red灯. That's only accident.
And Brian has bush hogged as much as he can from the cane holes and everything, up there, he did it like a month ago, so.
But there's also a rail there.
Yes, guard rail.
But that, that, so, so far you get on, and it is a very, yeah.
I think one of his, I think one of his concerns was the fact that with the new bridge there, that's now cut off a significant portion of the end portion of where Dimmer's Lake Road came. Was entered, entered the road, so it's a shorter view when you enter on Central.
Sure.
I will say, it's keep in mind that while they were making that bridge, they cut it off right there.
Yeah.
And tried to flow the grid to it, that parking lot, and they never, didn't use it. All the time they go over on the bridge.
Yeah. Are, are they using it now?
Okay, it's back open.
I know, but is it being utilized?
You see somebody else.
Yeah.
And I see more people leaving it. In a long time.
All right. Council, y'all feel strongly anyway with this?
I stopped voting for road and signed changes. And unless all residences of that area agree to it.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I did not vote for it. But that's why, no, that's why we didn't make a motion to approve that last time.
Yeah.
They only have one resident, right, I guess?
Only one resident, yeah. She doesn't even go on that road right now, but if she did sell one of those lots, to her, this is her point. If she did sell one of those lots, she could have a driveway that would go off of there. So it would be inconvenient to, to the person, if it was a driveway, come to Dimmer's Lake Road.
Right. And with, with President Chrysler asking me the question, I needed to put this before y'all. I knew it would be tough, and I knew where Lynn would sit, but I had to ask the question of y'all.
Well, we left it unresolved four years ago, so I think we need to vote it up or down this time.
Okay.
Lynn also made the comment before she left that, um, the students sometimes park right there at Rhode Island in that little parking area, and it blocks the entrance to get down the road. And she said she also was concerned that maybe police or fire, a fire truck or an ambulance couldn't get down it, do it then.
Casey, will you check on that with Jim tomorrow, please?
And I say that the road is narrow, but all of our roads are narrow. Through Main Street, Long Street, you have to get off the road to let it go or pass.
Yeah, that was your point.
Part of what Casey was saying, part of it's got some blind spots in it, being in that curve, and when the cane has overgrown some.
Right.
So I think that's some, could be some of the difference too, it's just a topo or some of those things. But you're right.
Very good. We'll bring it up to vote. Um, next one is discussion of the Dimmer's Veil. Sean, I think you want to talk about this?
Uh, I wasn't really prepared to talk about this, I thought this was gonna be a more thing since you got the email. Uh, just a little history of the veil. Uh, so it was presented to the church, uh, a hundred and thirty-one years ago, back in eighteen ninety-four.
It was the namesake of the city.
We and James Dimmer's came to visit, his one and only visit to the city. Uh, he presented the veil and, and a, uh, American flag. And last time the American flag was seen was at the city centennial in eight, nineteen eighty-nine. I, I can't trace where that's gone since that point. But, um, back in, was it June?
The hurricane, or the windstorm, something like that?
So sometime this summer, um, we had storms come through town, blew a lot of trees down, it blew a tree that was next to where the old church is, and the church, a- and the tree landed on the, the base of the veil and knocked it off. And our, um, water public works department had, uh, procured the veil and took it to safekeeping. Um, you know, until a decision could be made about that. I think, uh, Piedmont's maintenance probably took the rest of the base.
We've got, we've got, I believe Brian's got most.
So we had it now.
It's put back together, and it's sitting on a four-by-four post. Because the next question will be is, where do y'all want to put it?
Yeah.
Do you want to put it?
That's the way I'm reading.
If you put it inside the lobby?
Yeah, I rang it one time.
You put it outside?
You can put it in there.
But do understand, the veil is loud, it's still underneath there, and, uh...
Let's put it inside.
But you have to do something. Because anybody would go out there.
I'll just come through.
That's right.
And this guy wouldn't get off of it.
It's hard to mediate.
Well, and going back to the subject, so, uh, recently, uh, Piedmont's president sent an email to our city manager offering to donate the veil to the city. And, you know, we can, we can discuss later.
Yeah.
About our feelings about where we would like, like the veil. I have strong feelings myself, but, you know, I'm not a dictator on this. This is everybody's decision on where you want to, what we want to do, need to come to some kind of consensus on.
But it's in great shape.
Just playing it in public, so that the public can see it, and giving a little bit of history about, about the veil.
So, he sent this in an email, I asked him to send us some, an email on letterhead officially donated it to the city. And then Thomas put together the resolution, so it's clear that Piedmont gave it to the city, and the city is here to cure it and to take care of it. And the veil was built, it's got like Troy, New York, and the year.
I can't imagine how old that thing is.
And so, uh, it's pretty cool.
All right. Next is discussion of additional concept plans for City Hall, renovation of the parking lot. We have a couple options here in front of us, three options.
Rhonda, can you throw those options up, please, ma'am? Thank you. The first one is gonna be option one, and that's the one, um, coming in from Central, right there in the curve by Florida. And it does show removing the two trees. Option two, uh, was a smaller size of the same layout.
You're going too long. That's one, Rhonda, you're not hard. That's one, they're in order, one, two, and three.
And option two still takes out the trees, but you have some green space or for some future space if you want to deal with that. That would be the left side, um, directly by, in front of the gym, and when you turn in, it's to the left there. Option three is taking out the gym location building. DOT will not give you a front entrance. And you can see that you would come in from the backside of Hazel. You know, if you think about it, on the backside, it's very level with two different layers there, but then to the right, where the grass is directly behind, it's got a pretty good slope. So, you would have to, it's gonna be a great distance of walking. And I know that I have seen, and Megan, and Rhonda, and the other ladies, and April have seen the struggle with some of our older population just trying to get from here to our door. Because what they would have to do, we would not better do a sidewalk at an angle to get to the center, if City Hall is in the center. You would have to do a sidewalk, like you're going into the distance, which would be the police department, and then walk down off the sidewalk, and then come in the front doors. And I think if you took that plan, people forty years from now would almost say, what were they thinking for that plan? Because that wasn't the best use of those trees that died.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a thought, it's just a comment. Um, I'm not advocating one over the other, um, but we need to make a decision and move forward.
So in this option three, it's got parking alongside of, uh, Central Avenue. I mean, is that parking there necessary? It seems like there's enough parking there where the gym is, and if we repave across the road where Ballfield is for designate Ballfield and post office to satisfy their needs as far as parking goes. But what, what's the purpose of the?
Trying to, I remember I just said about the older population, how much they struggle from this parking lot? They would have to have a longer walk to get here, so it all comes into the perception of that.
The entrance to the police department is on this side of the...
Yes, right here where it is now, on the backside, where the wood ramp is.
That's where you walk in to the G C I C window.
So, my thoughts right now, the post office is, post office priority in, in the movement. It's moving City Hall, moving the police department, depends on getting funding for renovations in this building for them to do that, and to pay for a lot of this extra parking allowance. Uh, I mean, I don't, I mean, the timeline on that's not quite as important to me as the timeline of getting the, the, the post office up here. Um, now I'm willing to say, go ahead with tearing down the gym and putting in the parking there. And then, once this, once the, once we get to the point with City Hall and Police Department, then we revisit the rest of this.
I don't want to delay this too much more as far as this conversation, to get this movement along as far as getting quotes on things. How much trouble would it be to get a quote on option two, or a quote on option two versus option three? So we have those laid out front of us on the, on the differences of the two.
Well, we would, he would have to do a change order on his scope of service. Because now he's gonna have to fully design to design.
I don't know if he would have to fully design it, if you can just get some rough estimates for cost.
I can ask for rough estimates, I know, but, but you gotta realize with rough estimates, as you know, they're not real.
And even with, even with the, the way option three is presented here, so what does that do as far as water runoff?
So that's all, it's still all part of it?
It's still required, but what about, is it necessary that tearing down the gym and putting the spaces there and utilizing the spaces across the street, is that, is that, does that affect runoff that much? I mean, that gym is, that building's been there, and obviously been...
Well, they're having to do measurements to take off of the impervious surface, and then, because you gotta look at again, which way the, how the land lays.
Yeah.
Because, pretty much, the existing water runoff is down the hill from the gym onto under Florida. And then there's a, a ditch between those neighbors over there that goes down, and it takes a right, and it's probably about G Y.
Right, but, I mean, caveat this, I'm not an engineer or architect, but, I mean, gym being there, gym not being there, I don't, I mean, I don't understand how I don't understand how that would affect the water flow any different. You know, just for that, that's those spaces of this, because, I mean, we're kind of getting, we kind of need to be moving to getting post office up here.
And it's my understanding of the email, the post office wasn't necessarily for that parking.
Right.
Option, option three.
Let me ask our local postmaster if he would like to weigh into this. Sean, have you had any discussions with Richard or any of those guys?
I just, first of all, I've heard of option three.
Okay. They had it properly.
I've heard of option A, option B, and you know, part of the post office, we can do my job forever. But we don't, we, we don't personally have any significant value to the trees or anything like that, so it, it, it doesn't make legal or us, you know, they're not, they're not gonna weigh in on that, you know, this is the city of Dimmer's, and their constituents, this is their, their situation as far as...
And the post office has made that.
Um, but, you know, everybody's standing neutral on that part, but this is the post now, I saw, I have to reach out to the community.
So, so Sean, there's already like a, like a handicap ramp out there that leads from where the gym is, which would be where the parking lot is. So, to me, that would, I mean, this is my opinion, that seems kind of optimal for, you know, somebody that's disabled, because you've already, we've already got a ramp built there, and they go straight into the building from that. So I, I don't understand, I don't, I don't understand why the reservation.
But is everybody gonna be coming in that same, same door?
No.
You still have your, you would still have your front door, which would be facing the trees.
Okay.
Then you would still have your side door.
And, and the ramp, the ramp leads right to it.
And the only thing I say, and the only thing I say about that, there could be a change in ADA ramps when that was built X number of years ago. So, that's just a question for the engineers.
Well, I'm looking for option four, where we put them on the front of building and let them use the existing parking, which is more than adequate.
That's what we met with them out, with the post office out here. They, they come, where'd they come down here from?
North Carolina, Alabama.
Okay, so they come on site, we went room to room.
Right.
Looking at all of those options, and they didn't have a place to back their transfer trucks in, unload goods. So we looked at the middle, middle build over here, where the history brings this to, looking at space there, there was no room. The optimal spot for them to kind of build that ramp was over there on that side.
But the, the answer to that is simple. Provide a truck with a lift gate on it, then they can pull up anywhere, they don't need a ramp.
That's not what they want. That's what's not going in, drawn in there.
Who does it want?
The post office, but that's their design.
Has this been, uh, addressed on that?
Yes, I, I had an extensive conversation with them about that.
About a truck or the ramp?
Oh, yeah, we talked about why they want trucks and ramps, and why they have...
Oh, they have them, I saw one of them in the room.
They may have one or two, but e- even, they talked about, even in some of their rural locations, they put these big ramps out in the middle of the parking lot, faces up to it. But that's not enough for them out here, for them to do something like that. We had a whole hour-long conversation. We had a whole hour-long conversation about that.
And that option doesn't get your bill to resign. Remember when we started talking about this, the only thing we had to do as a city was to run power up here and the post office.
We gotta provide the parking.
Yeah.
The power is the only thing.
It's more than adequate parking already now.
But they're on this side of the building.
I have a question, this already designed to move the post office in the first place.
Jimmy, I don't know why you keep looking at me, I haven't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry with this question.
I said, this already designed to move the post office in the first place.
It was just a conversation that we've been having for a number of years, ever since we purchased this building. The goal was to move it up here.
Your, your tax dollars are paying eight thousand dollars a month on this building right now. We can only limit, we can only rent this building out to very few people according to the lease that we have. The government is, the US government is eligible to rent this building. We're limited to renting it out to commercial businesses. So having the post office up here allows us to help defray the costs of going forward with paying for this building on there. We can't just go to Subway and have Subway come out here to this building. Because that's a commercial establishment. And nonprofits, I mean nonprofits don't have very much money to, to pay the rent of this building. So we're limited in who we can bring in here. And to be quite honest, I mean, downtown parking, downtown traffic. We've got one restaurant there now. In a couple of months, we're gonna have two restaurants there. One's probably gonna be open at lunchtime. And we've got a coffee shop there. So we have, we have issues with traffic flow and parking downtown. So this has kind of been discussed for a long time about that. I mean, it's gonna, it should benefit the post office because they'll be here at a city center. It'll, it should benefit the downtown area and those businesses that are gonna be there. And it'll be much safer for the public to utilize the post office here than risk parking downtown and backing up and having somebody do it. So that, that's kinda been what the conversation's been.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the conversation, I've been here several times. And also, one of the ones that is gonna be using your rent in this society. And more than eighty percent of the residents of Denver's are over age fifty thousand. That means I am the only one that's gonna be using those rents.
I'll be there a couple of years. I'll be there in a couple of years.
So if you need to consider half a walk from the gym over here to the post office.
Right.
Is an option.
Well, the gym would be right, the, where the gym area is right next to the post office would be. It's like right there, within a few feet, there's a, there's a handicap ramp already there.
So who's saying?
Where the gym, the post office would be at the very end of that wing over there. That's right across from where the gym is, the gym would be torn down. And there's all, there's a handicap ramp there, easy for people that, that are in wheelchairs or have trouble walking can go straight up that ramp into the building, just like the disabled children used when it was a school here. So, I mean, to me, I mean, it was my, I mean, I kinda made that suggestion about tearing down the gym there because it seems like a win-win on everything. Because you get parking right next to where the post office is gonna be. Elderly, disabled, have access to go straight in there and not have to walk from down there to up there, that would be the goal in this.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay, so we're talking about moving the post office up here is gonna alleviate parking issues in downtown. Are we planning on leaving the post office building empty?
It's not our decision. Not our decision, it's DDA's decision.
But I assume that at some point, another business is gonna go in there, so how is that gonna help parking issues?
Jimmy, would you rather people park in the grass out here? Or would you rather people walk from downtown up here?
There's plenty of parking already now.
You think so? Have you been through town? Have you been through town on busy times?
I live here disliked.
Have you lived here for forty years? So here's the thing, is in Denver's, the conversation has always been, there's no parking. There's just no parking. And that is every single, I grew up here and there was, guess what? No parking. And so when we start talking about, thank you Sean, when we start talking about putting parking lots in, I'm not understanding who the people are that are against a parking lot. Because for all my life, all I've heard is if Denver's could just get more parking. And then we have the Fourth of July, nobody has anywhere to park. Everybody's, minds about that. When we have Christmas, nobody has anywhere to park. And now we have these wonderful restaurants that are number one, one coming in and one that's already there. And they're like, and the great coffee shop, if you come through maybe around noon or maybe eight o'clock if you're out of bed, then you'll see that there are tons of cars in Denver's. Okay, parking is an issue. Not only for the people of Piedmont and those students, not only for the elderly that can't walk. You know, we're looking at these different designs that have a hard time walking a long distance or up a steep incline. Parking is a situation. And ignoring it
No, I'm just looking at reality. If you move it up here and you take and put something else in that building, it's still has the same.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. So we actually have a lot more parking downtown than, than what we advertise. And Piedmont has graciously allowed us to advertise their lot that is.
And Sean, have you seen the people coming across that? That four-way there?
Not many people utilize it.
Yeah, and they all look like this, their eyes are this big. They're wondering, are people gonna stop? Okay, how long do I have to hold this button? I go through there four times a day. And in the morning, in the afternoon, and in the evening, okay? And I see those students on their bicycles, you know, or not, or a group of students, you know, with the people that are showing them around the college. And they are literally wide-eyed, looking, wondering if everybody's gonna stop, when do I go? Because that light turns green and their go sign goes. They have to come on, that person turning left has to wait on you. What if that person turning left is not paying attention? I mean, then you got two bicycles coming across. And you've got these, these students, and now we're talking about parking elderly people over there and walking across? You can vote for that if you want to.
Well, looking at these options, how, how would y'all like to proceed?
My opinion is I'd like to see the changes.
Isn't it two different discussions, parking and post office? It's just getting all.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think you're right, I think the discussion on, on the front of us right now is where are we looking as far as the options, as far as the parking lot, to move the post office up here? So now the question is, 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 is we have three options in front of us. And which option would y'all like to proceed with conversations? Not approval, we can't approve anything until we have a number on it, but which way would y'all like to proceed?
I mean, I, I like option number three, tearing down the gym. But I, I don't know about yet at this point if all the others, all the other parking here.
With the post office, these nineteen spaces, that's their number.
They should be, I mean, by my count, looking at this and across the street.
But understand also that if the police has moved, their entrance is from that existing backdoor.
I, I realize that, but we're not to the point of moving police and City Hall.
But we also have to look down the road. I mean, we can't make decisions based on November the sixth. We have to make decisions based on years down the road. That's what we're here for.
Part of what I need, guys, is I need direction for parking back here. I need direction to finish the plans down here. I need directions to finish the plans down there for the police to give y'all an accurate number. Otherwise, a, a rough estimate isn't gonna block anybody up.
So Sean, I heard you're proposing option three, does anybody else have a option you would like to proceed forward with?
We're just talking about pricing, I mean, I know one and two.
Well, there is some cost in as far as us moving forward with, moving with something. So once you make that decision, we're essentially a little bit stuck with that decision.
I understand.
Now we can step back and pull away from it, but that decision needs to be.
Well, I feel like the gym could be a revenue source. I'm just throwing it out there. And having a parking lot back up to the door, I mean, we've, yes, we could use it for guard sales. And we've all driven through their yard to unload stuff into that building. Having that parking lot on option one would be handy-dandy if we used, utilized that gym as a revenue source. That lady that does these, these festivals at the Habersheim fairgrounds, she's expressed interest in, in renting that building.
And we have talked to her.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that gym could be another revenue source for the city. And, and without having to do any renovations. So I mean, that could help pay for some of that construction.
I like option three. And the reason why I do is because it's the only option where we're not coming off of the main road and causing that traffic, you know, pileup right there, people turning left into there. You know, from the Cornelia side, I think that that's probably a nightmare. Especially with the, the way the roads are developed now. They're confusing enough and adding another left-hand turn. That, that is my main concern is traffic safety. Even though I will miss the gym, I would miss the gym that, you know, most of us played in as children. But at the same time, that left-hand turn is gonna be a tough one in that turn, in that curve.
I really would challenge y'all to step out to the front corner right there and make a walk to the gym. Because people like this more, and there's several older folks that come to City Hall and they're gonna struggle to walk from there all the way there. That's just my, that's my opinion.
Rhonda, you have experience seeing this too, you wanna stand up and tell us something, or April?
I have a Megan's theory, I was being curious if we had sales in the gym, I'm just thinking of customers coming into the city, like she said, they struggle just a little ways ahead of walking to this door. I'm just imagining them not to walk that hill to go in to pay, I just worry for their, for their health. And well, they didn't figure out how to go into that way easier. I just, I myself would not be able to do it. I could imagine someone in that kind of circumstance would not be able to do as well.
Rhonda? You gotta speak up, so.
We have several that are easy walkers. And that is, we call that a stop in the jail. Even from our hand, we have parking, let's stop out there from our windows, just take a break. We have a lot of families that are getting out every day. And so they walk there. Also, we have, we have a good many mothers who would look at those children and hand them for, you know, their diseases. And Harry and our, our Harry, in a hot tub, another kid in the hand, you know, just. You sit there at the window all day, you can just see how difficult it is for somebody to come that distance. If you didn't see the ball. And a lot of times, Melvin or April or myself or Melvin are making two hours close to see him from out the window, the window, the door. And just all things so out of rank or out of energy, but now they get to the.
I do that too, so don't leave me out.
All right, y'all have a few minutes to think about it, I'm bringing it up again. Um, looks like we have nine minutes, ten minutes. Thomas, do you wanna go and make a decision here before or after?
Um, I would, my guess is a half an hour to that reception, so.
After. Very good. All right, we'll recess for a few minutes and then back up at seven. If anybody would like to step out front and look down. See how this goes. See how this goes.
All right, bro.
We're thinking about doing. It's really not, not cool. I can tell you that, that the people that were told this, they were distressed even to the point of actually calling, their calls are made to the sheriff's department asking them, is this true? Are y'all really talking with Demerit about this? So this is a very serious issue. And when you put the thought into city employees on something like that, it's hard to get that thought out. I know for myself, I have never, ever had any discussions, never heard any discussions with anybody, staff, even people in the city about ever getting rid of our police department. It's non-issue in that regards. But Andrew, have you, have you ever had any discussions with anybody, councilor staff about, about getting rid of the police department?
No, I have not.
Mark, have you ever had?
No, sir. There's never been any in my office, anywhere, in any shape or form.
Jerry?
No, sir. We definitely support the police department.
Donnie?
No.
Jimmy?
I've heard rumors about it.
Have you told, so have you told these rumors to the police department?
I don't think that's in the business.
But that's none of my business. So you don't want to take this opportunity that we have all sat here, pretty much, gave our support to the police department saying, we have no interest in getting rid of the police department. You don't want to take this opportunity, you don't want to take this opportunity to make a public apology that you have made this statement to the police department. Okay?
I've heard a couple of rumors.
Where have you heard these couple of rumors coming from?
That's none of my business.
It's none of my business. Okay, I got it. I got it. So just so you know, our police department, you've, this has really stressed them out. And you don't want to say any apology about that. You don't want to make, you don't want to look them in the eye and make, and tell them, there has been no discussion within city council or staff about getting rid of the police department.
I have never made this statement.
You have, you've never told anybody from the police department that, that either staff or council, you're going to be said to them, said that they're going to be, never said anything like that.
Okay. You got a city employee came to me shortly after y'all's meeting, when we called it down there. And it wasn't a place where our city employee would be. They came to me today and said basically what he said.
I can, I can state that I've spoken directly to city employees that have countered exactly the opposite of what you're saying.
Well, that the record shows that your all is at work and no conversations we made. So I appreciate all y'all's hard work.
I would like to say, especially in the city, we have got the best police department in the whole country.
I second that, Ms. Gail.
And Mr. Allen, you'll be given a chance to showcase our police department with this trophy that's right down here shortly.
What?
All right, any other appearance in public comment? Yes, Casey, one of you and your staff. And if that's there, you can come up too. Casey, you want to tell us about?
God, I'm going to cry.
Okay. That's to make sure it's all worth it.
So the other, the other day when we were having a fall festival, James and Stephen were down and making at the GOHS conference. And it surprised me that we won. And I said that in the paper called and asked me for, about the award. And I, I said surprisingly, but what this award is for is for our traffic enforcement, but it also goes from our policies and procedures. It goes our training. So a lot of it goes into that. So I'm, was surprised because in the year and a half that I've been a chief, a little over a year and a half, me and James are the only ones that's left from the old. So we rebuilt the entire police department. So not only did we get all, everybody's training up to date and up to where we could have the training to get that award. And all those guys went through all that training and put in the work and the effort to do that. Then we got Sergeant Squires here who is our training sergeant who we'd never had before. And he makes sure that everybody gets their training, gets what they need. But he also goes through a long process of turning all this information into the state. And if y'all know how it is with the state, that's a lot, there's a lot of red tape to go through. So I can't take any credit for any of this. The guys and Sergeant Squires who did all this. I was surprised because we do have a new department. After a year and a half, everybody's new. So to get all them up to that speed and to win an award is just a testament to what they do.
Very nice job. Very nice job. Casey, don't hold that up. Stephen, Stephen, you pick it up. When he was giving his award on stage, he's got to rock it in his hands. Because it's two pieces, as I found out when I picked it up. Counsel, y'all stand up and give a picture. And the crowd was ooh and aah as he was trying to get it up.
We want five points. But again, that's a, for to be a new department, that's, I think is a great experience. All righty, three, two, one.
Thank you.
Wait, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Megan, why don't you stand me up? Can you come over here and tell us about pumpkins?
Who wants pumpkins? And the book choices. Okay. Guys, Demerit's Elementary has done a pumpkin painting contest. Each classroom did it. I believe these must be the top five. But at the school, they are asking the kids to donate a dollar and they get to vote on which pumpkin is the best. And whoever wins gets to do a movie night. So these are actually book characters. So that's why the books are in front of each pumpkin. This is ET, it doesn't have a book. They did the science, but they're book characters.
And they go back to the school tomorrow. So if anybody would like to give Megan, in cash, and pick one, she'll turn that in.
Let's just do it now.
Yeah, yeah, I would welcome to. If you would like.
I already did that, so you can keep my sticker.
I don't care if cash. What's your pick?
I don't want, I don't want five.
Want to give you a hundred?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Every year for Christmas, we do, we go to the school and they give us a couple of names of some needy families. Or great, or Christmas. So we're, I got with the assistant fire chief. We're going to be having a old truck, my dad's old truck out here, a thirty something model truck. On November the twenty ninth, the weekend after Thanksgiving. We're going to have a Santa Claus out there. If anybody wants to come take pictures, don't cost nothing. You take your own picture, make a good picture. If you want to give a donation, that's what it goes for. We have seven kids that the counselor gave me. And last year, we were able to get everything on their list. Plus, we got a couple of gift cards for Christmas dinner for them.
That's what this flyer is about with this. Tell them what you're looking for from donations from the public.
Yeah, just anybody that wants, Ms. April takes them at the, at City Hall. You can drop by the police department, we'll, we'll take them. Any kind of donation you can make for, to help those kids out.
But what he's asking for though, is cash check or Walmart card so that they can buy specifically for the children.
What we will get is a list of something they want, their sizes of clothes. And then the ladies in the police department and our officers go out and get that stuff. We take it back to the school before they get out for Christmas break. And they, I'm assuming wraps it and gives it to their parents for Christmas morning.
Give me my lady.
That's fine.
Thank you, Casey.
Well, can you go ahead and hit on the photos with Santa? Because it's all the same. You did?
Yeah. The photos of Santa is, you, you take your own photos. There'll be a nice old truck out there. I can't remember, thirty-two, I think it is. And Santa will be out there. And it makes for a good holiday picture if anybody wants to come out there. And that don't cost nothing. But if you want to leave a donation, there'll be a donation box out there.
That's November twenty ninth.
November twenty ninth, from eleven to four. Will be out there. Right out in front of the, where the two big trees are.
I'll let you say, I'll take what? We've got some other things planned with the twenty-fifth anniversary of Demerit Elementary. And our school resource officer, Joe Chastain and Casey, are working with principal, Ms. Lana, for us to, we will invite some of them to our meeting on December the second. We will have a resolution. I had sent some to your Heather. And I'm asking Heather for some of the history over the twenty-five years since the school's not new enough or old enough to be in his portfolio of history. And, and then we're going to do something else for the kids. Megan, talk about that part.
So she's just sent an email yesterday talking about the city partnering with them to get stockings, medium to small size. She's talked about an upcoming event in March that she wants the city to partner with. And then DDA had discussed the city participating in the Baldwin.
Halloween parade, I mean.
Christmas parade. So we reached out to her to see if we could partner with them on that. So all this just stemmed yesterday. So there's a lot in the works that we don't know the answer to.
On December the second, really stems from Donnie bringing that up and asking and bringing to our attention. And we're also getting more information of communication lines open because of our, because of Joe Chastain and Casey being involved on a regular basis over there at the school. So, so we'll be hearing a lot more commitment with Demerit Elementary.
Well, I have to give credit to my wife, who is now working forty-nine percent at Demerit Elementary. And she came home with a Demerit Elementary twenty-fifth anniversary T-shirt. And I was like, number one, how do I get one of those? Number two, what can we do for Demerit Elementary? And, and that's where really where the, I didn't know. But when I saw that shirt, I was like, wouldn't it be cool? And sorry, guys, I actually said this. So wouldn't it be cool if all of us were wearing twenty-fifth anniversary T-shirts? And not that everybody likes to wear a T-shirt, but I could just see that, you know? And then the kids being here, I just think it'd be a big time.
You can tell me about that.
Welcome to the T-shirt world.
Put a T-shirt over that shirt. I think, no, it does. Yeah, I think a resolution kind of, it kind of makes it, we're going to get a trade-off for us a T-shirt. We'll work on that.
I'll work on it.
All right, any other appearance in public comment?
Make sure, Donnie, you get some T-shirts and triple X.
Triple X.
She's talking about for me. She's asking for me.
All right. Under ten six is the minutes from October the seventh. These were emailed out to you. Everybody's looked at and will entertain a motion to approve those or modify those.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll check it.
All those in favor? All right. Next is discussion request of Piedmont to utilize the conference center. This is more of a policy change, if y'all would allow that, for them to allow to have alcohol inside of this room. So we'll open the floor up for discussion.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not really comfortable with alcohol in this room. I mean, we spent a lot of money on this carpet. And I know we have replacements. If something were to happen, but, you know, I've always been an advocate of us utilizing, you know, event space more. But, I mean, if any kind of alcohol or any kind of drink, sugary drinks or whatever were going to be used for anything, I would prefer that those stay in the kitchen area and a place where something is spilled, it doesn't really make a big a deal. But I, I just don't, I, I don't, I don't like the idea of alcohol being served in this room.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on that?
I agree, but not a big good idea.
So we're going to, do I like to table that? Or do both know on that as far as to change that to allow alcohol in the room?
If y'all do anything, nothing changes. Then you could ask for a motion and we'll just let it die.
Okay. We entertain a motion to make a change to allow alcohol to be served in this event space.
In this room?
In this room. Maybe he's just asking the question. He's just asking them the question. They want to make a motion. And they're not saying anything, which will mean motion will die. Unless somebody wants to say yes. All right, any motions? None heard, that motion dies. We'll move on to the next one. Consideration of amending section six nineteen, temporary special event license. This is the event license to allow Piedmont nonprofits to have special events somewhere in the city.
On their campus.
On their campus or somewhere in the city.
On the campus of whoever's having.
Correct. For a fee, we talked about a change on this. We will need two public hearings on this, right, Thomas?
Two readings, not necessarily.
Can we call one of these a reading tonight?
Yes, we wait first reading, then we'll find out the information.
How, how will we make that?
You just need a motion to wait first reading of the ordinance and it'll be set over for a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. And if any changes, we can make that at the second reading.
Correct. Correct.
So we need a motion as stated.
Well, okay, so I'll make that motion second. I do think that, I do think that the line item file under section D should be city manager or designated or some other verbiage with that in case the city manager was exposed at that point to make that decision.
If you look at the line below that, the chief of police or the chief designated, they immediately revoke it. So you can kind of play off saying that.
So why don't we, so why don't we say the special event to be approved by the city manager or the chief of police? The absence. Well, I mean, it says that they can, they can revoke it. But it doesn't say anything about them approving. But what do you think about that on this?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Allen, if you look up at, in subsection three, it requires the chief to sign off on the area where it will be served. So chief already has a role, chief, police chief already has a role in the approval of one of these.
All right, once against counsel, we will talk about this again in our next meeting for the second reading. But we do have a motion on the table to wait first reading. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Next is consideration of a one-way street ordinance for Demerit Lake Road. Just did come up four years ago. Thank you, Councilman Allen, for reminding us that that did die at that time for a lack of motion. We will entertain a motion to approve a one-way street or deny a one-way street for Demerit Lake Road. Would you like to make a motion?
Make the motion to deny the one-way street. I think that, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel. You can, you can definitely have a different opinion on me. I mean, there's valid points that we've heard our police chief make on this. But, I mean, my, my, my mind, my decision has not been changed since, since the original discussion about this one-way street. I feel that, you know, all parties involved in a street, for me, going forward, any kind of decision should be in agreement for any kind of change or any kind of signage change on, on things. Unless we really do have incident where it could determine that it is a public safety hazard. So I'll make that motion to deny. Y'all can either, y'all can either let that die or y'all can make the motion count.
I'm going to second that because we do have so many narrow streets in the city of Demerit that if you took a tape measure out there, you would have one-way streets everywhere. So I don't know why we would pick one or two to make, to make one-way streets when they're all about the same width anyway.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second to deny the one-way street. All those in favor to deny the one-way streets? Very good. Thank you. All right. Next thing up is Piedmont's graciously. Y'all made it a bill that comes down town to the city for us to find a great new home for it, but we'll find in the future. And it's in a safe place right now, waiting in that location. Do we have a resolution? Mark, do you want to read that or Thomas? Thomas, you want to read the resolution?
Resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Demerit to accept donation of the Demerit Bell from Piedmont University. Whereas the duly elected governing authority of the city of Demerit, Georgia is the mayor and council thereof. And whereas Piedmont University wishes to donate Demerit Bell to be shared with the community. Whereas the city of Demerit wishes to accept the donation of the Demerit Bell, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Demerit will accept the donation from Piedmont University of the Demerit Bell this, this sixth day of November twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. We need a motion to accept this resolution of the bell. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Very good. Thank you.
And just, you know, if anybody's got, if anybody's got an opinion about, you know, ideas about what you do with this bell, talk to me, talk to him, talk to him, talk to all of us. So we can, you know, the more ideas we have, the better chances we come up with a good repurposing of that bell so that the public can see it and learn the history of it and its part in the history of the city.
All right. Next up for discussion is our three options that's laid out in front of us for the drawings. This is to move to the next phase. The next phase being obtaining a price. This isn't an indefinite move forward with one way or the other. But I'd like to remind y'all that this move forward, this does have inherent costs, it's just paid through the design. So I challenge you to, to be thoughtful in which way you go. Counsel, do y'all have an opinion? And would you like to make that opinion into a motion? And which direction you would like to go with what's laid in front of us? We got four different.
Four different thoughts on, on this. I mean, if we're voting on a, if we're voting on a option on this, I, I prefer option three, but I have reservations about the entirety of, of this. And maybe it could be broken down into phases. But just like with, with what we had discussed before, you know, to move this thing forward, I, I mean, that's, that's my choice. Anybody else want to comment before we make any kind of motion on that?
I think that even between option one and option two, those are, those are financial options. And as we move onward with getting prices on these things, we may have to cut out a little bit of part of the lot for that kind of price. So I think moving forward with an option and then making those changes if we see the prices of the road.
I'd like to say that I, I like a lot of the things on option three. The main thing that I like is that it is the only option where we don't come off of the main road causing left-hand turn issues, causing traffic issues because it's already kind of confusing the way it is with, you got the curve there, you got a road going straight and you got a road turning to the right. If we put another driveway in there, it's just going to be more confusing. Coming in from the back, maybe less confusing. So I, I kind of like the option three.
Does anybody want to make a motion to move forward with one of your options? So you give direction.
I don't think either of the three options are viable. My opinion is if we can't put them in the front of the building and use the existing parking, we should leave them where they are.
I'll make a motion for option three.
All right, we have a motion to move forward with option three. Do we have a second for option three?
Second.
All those in favor to move forward with an option three to obtain pricing? All right, those opposed, no? Thank you, sir. Let me be clear on what we just did. Your last words were just for pricing. So we're asking for a run price. No, sir, no, sir. This is to move forward with the design phase to get a price. Okay. So it is move forward with option three, finish the design. We finished, okay. Thank you very much for clarification. We can, I can have them when they're doing it, they can. So if that's an option, yes, I hear you loud and clear. Now, if we're going to move forward, well, say the good series, Mayor. To move forward with the design work for option three. After the design work comes back, then we can move forward with funding that design. I will tell y'all that he had worked full blast on option one and two. Option three was, he just threw it together. So he is probably going to do a change order because he doesn't have anything other than just the basic sketch. So, yes. And I'm not saying, I, I don't know, I'm just forewarning you.
I mean, I mean, figure out, I mean, option one, two, I mean, we, we had some.
But it wasn't completed. So I.
It was close, but.
So this is part of construction, this is part of change orders and making changes to the plans. It happens every day. It's just money, though, I've got to come up with, so, but that's okay. Next is manager report and review of finances. I'll do the best I can. You time me, Frankie. I will start out letting y'all know that Honor Code, who has been our inspector for four or five years, has put in their notice she is going to go into, to work for a government.
to work for a government, do the inspections. So I have until December thirty-first to find somebody. And uh so that is high on the list to start because Jamie has done a very good job for us. She's tough, she, she knows her business and uh we have not had much issues. They've had complaints, but not issues because she knew her stuff and I applaud her for that. We've got, I emailed to y'all in carpet heads today, the weather overview from uh Melanie. And uh so y'all read that, the carpet heads needs, they're getting started tomorrow and making sure everything is prepared for a wind chill, so or twenty-four or whatever, who knows if they're right or wrong. But we're gonna be prepared in all the buildings and city vehicles and et cetera. So it's also, you may want to make sure you're ready at home too and uh.
If you're outside.
Want a car ride?
Yeah. We'll tell you that we will be doing Rees across America next month. I want to say it's December fourteenth, which is a Saturday, but I'll confirm that. And I would like to have Mary Church here on December the second meeting.
December thirteen.
Say that again?
December thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you. And um to have him here to receive the check to do that again, so just go ahead and put that on your calendar there.
What time is that?
Last two years, I think it's been like ten o'clock or eleven o'clock. But I gotta confirm that still because we're putting together the agenda.
I sure it's at ten.
We're putting that together with the speaker and uh the V W and all that. But it's a fantastic event, especially if you have kids to come see this and understand it.
The, two years, two years ago, they had all the events happen at the same time. Last year they were staggering and so the uh, I guess the honor guard had come to each one of them, so.
And we were the first one last year at ten.
It was cold.
Rhonda also is working diligently in her office with the door closed and working on the tax bills. Because again, Haversham County has a new tax system. Because what they just updated was the oldest tax system in the state of Georgia. And so everybody's in the learning here. And so Rhonda has been working with our Tyler financial system. And it appears to be that the bills at this point in time, where they are, could be going out by next Friday. And that gives you a due date of February first. And um it gives you all of December, all of January, part of here, so that's giving you about sixty, eighty days to be prepared in the time for that. So, but you, I mean, the officer, you see her door shut, please don't go with that.
I just, uh, what, since you're talking about taxes, I just want to take a time to do a little recognition of Ms. Joan Church, uh, who is retiring from the county assessor's office after fifty-seven years of employment. One place, working for our county, and nobody likes taxes, nobody likes tax assessments, but it's uh, you know, it is state required that we have. And she is the longest tenured county employee, so I just wanted to, I don't know if she'll know about this, but I just wanted to let her know that, you know, we honor her retirement.
Very sweet and very quick.
Answering any questions I have, and her retirement party is tomorrow from two to four at the Albright. That door. Thank you, so.
Full right.
Full right. Also, I want to let you know that next month we will have a special use resoning. Think y'all are aware of that, it's David Cook. Um, he bought John Hendrick's house back here off of, huh? And uh his request is, they already got, he uses that house as an investment house, the main house. They have a apartment that they use for rental. And under the R one zoning, you can only have one other unit like that. And he wants two, so y'all will hear that next, next on the uh December the second. Also, right now, he is going under the certificate of appropriateness in the historic district. And we don't have a committee, you gotta wait forty-six days for that approval, that approval will happen before y'all hear this on December the second. Mikey Deborah Showalter.
Does that, does that go all the way down, five?
It does. Mikey Deborah Showalter are also under the certificate of appropriateness at their yellow house. They have one of the houses there, they just have a metal carport cover. And they want to put another one just like that at the yellow house. Again, that's something the committee of the historical society will make a decision on. They're in there forty-five days, so it will be approved, so. And I've got one piece of approval, it's within my range, it's budgeted, it's ninety-four hundred dollars for a new mag meter with remote electronics to replace the Badger mag meter that is outdated at the sewer plant. So these are gonna be, some of the things won't be seen going forward on these type of magnets. I, I can't tell you more than what it does, he told me. It is a mag meter with remote electronics to replace the Badger mag meter. So I'm just telling y'all that for a point of reference that those items, things of that sort are happening. All right, I will tell you in Fletcher's report that our wastewater treatment facility is operated within permits. And the same thing with our drinking water is operated within permits. Going into Brian's report, we had thirty-three emergency locates, we had to locate three hundred and ninety-nine. They had two hundred and ninety-one work orders. Now this is big numbers, what I'm about to tell you. Our water loss for last month is two million and fifty-six thousand gallons. We had twenty-four leaks around the city and the county. No various reasons that he just started. And uh, and that's not counting what we just fixed over on Long and Connecticut. So that's a lot of loss right there, if you start putting that number in there. Because our total sales for the month is forty-eight million from Baldwin, seven billion from Tocola, and six point five million for our wealth, or a total of sixty-one billion dollars. And we lost a little over two million of that just for.
Gallons.
Yeah, gallons, gallons. I even wrote that.
I saw it.
Emergency nine-one-one calls, they had eight, one sewer call, uh streets, Leaping Brush had a hundred and sixty-five loads. And um we did some um fire usage gallons for Haversham County Fire was twenty-one thousand. And um everyone finished up another hundred and sixty-seven fire hydrants. That's probably leaving us about two hundred. We have pulled him off of that due to change in weather and so forth, and he'll pick that back up, finish those. And unfortunately, start right back over in that, in, in April with that. Police report. We had sixteen new meter sets, so that's sixteen times uh roughly three thousand dollars per of that. So we're, we're hitting pretty well on our on our meter sales there. Police department had four hundred and sixty-one calls in the month of September, three domestic violence calls, twenty-eight incident reports, thirteen accidents, Georgia State Patrol handled six and uh, and completed seven accidents due to injuries. Officers made a hundred and eighty-five traffic stops and issued ninety-four citations. That's a fifty-one percent uh ratio of citations to make warnings, make five arrests. Thanks to Stephen and his training, the officers completed a hundred and forty-five hours of training. Unfortunately, the fire department failed to send in the report. Go to our financials. Uh, our financial are dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. On the left side and the right side, you'll see the cash balance as of October thirtieth, which is reconciled at where we are today, where this is back thirty days. We uh went through some cash in the month of September, but when you look to the right, I had a hundred and nineteen thousand in general fund, keep looking at general fund as of thirtieth, we had three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Lost dollars, we had four hundred and seventy-four. We now have to give thirty-eight thousand dollars, five hundred and eight thousand against blocks. Our total cash on hand for September thirtieth was three point four million. Total cash on hand today is three point nine million. And our total operating cash was six hundred and twenty-four thousand on September thirtieth. And as of the thirtieth of October, it was almost a big little over a million dollars. We have three point eight five months of liquidity based on our total cash, not another penny came into the city. So we can cover it almost for four months. All payments are all included. The, you look at that page on page two, you'll see where the garbage truck loan is up, the fourth one down under notes payable. And so we've made a couple of payments as agreed with that. Uh, our water transfer um for the year is a million two oh nine. And our goal is a million three. Our goal is our goal is a million three ninety-one. So we've got some good cushion in there for us still to have, that, that is all, that's counting through September. So the uh, you know, when we transfer roughly twenty-two thousand dollars for salaries each week, that comes down to water transfers also, so. We only had ten thousand dollars in the month of September for revenues. You know, the biggest one was motor vehicle and uh, and then you'll see in the month of October, we had two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the insurance premium. And in the in, insurance premium, we had budgeted this year a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's not in these numbers, you'll see that next month, that's where you will see a big change in there with that. Total operating revenues, seven thirty-two for uh, for the water and sewer. And operating expenses of four seventy-nine with a net income of September of two hundred and three thousand. And we'll do the comparisons to our year-to-date of September. We are tracking very nicely on our revenues, very nicely under budget on our expenses. So you'll see that especially by the time we get through the year, that we have got a very good job maintaining those numbers. And splosh, like I said, there's five hundred and eight thousand. And right now, I only have two gear marks for splosh, which is forty-six thousand for the police cars and ninety-four thousand for the for the engine. Right now, I paid those out at least three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in splosh for water, sewer, streets, roads. So getting anywhere from thirty to thirty-eight thousand dollars, our splosh dollars is very good. Open up any questions?
We don't have any questions.
Anyone else? All right, welcome forward back up for appearance in public comments.
I would like to make a statement concerning what happened here earlier with Chief Castane and myself. This comes from a conversation we had where I told Casey I'd heard rumors. Two people told me that Mark's next thing was to get rid of the police department. It's nothing more than rumors, I stated that to Casey. I have said nothing against anyone on this panel, but counsel, I have not said anything that this council has said anything. I was very clear with him that this is people that came to me, it's just a rumor.
But it did cause.
Now, 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 wait, I'm, let me speak, don't interrupt me. I find it very distasteful that this was brought up in a public setting rather than a private meeting with me. It's, I considered it a personal attack on my character and I, I don't know where I'm going from here.
But you've admitted now that, that you said this, why is?
I, I had a conversation with Casey and told him, I had two people tell me that. And I also told him I had not verified that, that it was strictly rumors.
But it is called standing. So, so would you like to apologize to our police department or?
I don't have anything to apologize for.
Apologize to our police department, okay.
And again, I think what you did to me today is a personal attack. This should have been handled back there in this room, not in a public setting.
You are a public official.
This is true.
And public officials are public.
So I did inquire.
In the public.
I did enq- huh? Oh, I did inquire um about whether this could be discussed in executive session and not um out here in the public with this, and I was told, I mean, that, I would, that would have been my preference. But I was told that sunshine laws pre- prevent discussion of us talking about each other.
Who told you that?
That, that was legal advice that was given to me.
By who?
By a lawyer.
Maybe by the same people that told you those rumors, I'm not sure.
All right, any other appearance of public comments? If none, we need a couple of things for executive session, Thomas, we have a few things.
Uh, yeah, all three, personnel, real, acquisition of real estate and pending or threatened litigation.
Thank you, sir, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll say.
All those in favor to go into executive session?